Welcome, everyone, to the Board's December 6 regular meeting. This meeting is a little different than every other meeting during the year. The first meeting in December, the Board has their reorganizational meeting. And so they will elect a new chairman this evening, or the same chairman, and same with vice chairman and all of their different committee assignments. And so the first item on the agenda of the reorganizational meeting will be for to take nominations for the position of chairman for the 2022 year. At this time, I would ask for any nominations for chairman.
Mr. County Manager, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Jordan.
Commissioner Jordan has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the position of chairman?
Make a motion that the nominations be closed.
Motion to close. Second by Commissioner Efferd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Right. That passes seven to zero. At this time, I will take a vote on Commissioner Jordan as your chairman. All in those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Commissioner Jordan is now your chairman. Congratulations, sir. County Manager. He got up mighty quick, didn't he? I'd like to thank you all first for your vote of confidence to elect me as chairman. I appreciate it. I have sat under two great chairmen in the brief time I've been on this board, Mr. Matt Swain and Commissioner Bill Lohman, and I will try to do their example proud. At this time, according to GS 15-39, I will entertain nominations for vice chairman.
Chairman.
Chairman. I'd like to nominate the vice chairman, Commissioner Almond.
We have one nomination for Commissioner Zach Almond.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, those nominations be closed.
We have a motion to close nomination. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond. Furr.
Furr.
Commissioner Furr. Okay, so. Do we have a second? I thought he did it.
Yeah, we did.
It's my first day you're trying to confuse me already? He's messing with me already. All right, I'll see how that goes. All in favor of Commissioner Zach Almond as vice chairman? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Vice Chairman Almond. Are you ready for the?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to complicate things, but we can vote on the motion to close nomination.
Would you like to make a motion to close nomination?
We already did that. We never voted on it. I already made the motion to close them, and then somebody said that, but we never voted on it.
I blame that on Commissioner Lohman. At this point, under rules of order, do we need to vote on it?
I would say so, yes, sir.
Yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, you are reelected vice chairman. Quickest term in Stanley County Board history. I'm required to read that the chairman of the Board is the presiding officer of the Board of Commissioners unless excused by rule of the Board. The presiding officer has the duty to vote on any question before the Board, but does not have the right to break a tie vote in which he participated. Anybody have questions on that? Let me all knew that. First order of business as part of the reorganizational meeting is I need to ask for a motion to approve the following public official bonds. That is $100,000 bond for Tax Administrator Clinton Swearingen to expire on October 28, 2022, a $150,000 bond on Finance Officer Toby Hinson to expire June 30, 2022, a $50,000 bond for the Register of Deeds Suzanne Lauder to expire on December 1, 2022, and a $5,000 bond on Sheriff Jeff Crisco expiring December 3, 2022.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Almond.
I'd like to make a motion that the bonds you just read out are approved.
Motion by Commissioner Lohman. We have a second.
Second.
By Commissioner, by Vice Chairman Almond. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I am now going to open the floor for appointments to boards.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve these by slate. The EDC Board, which is for two commissioners, Commissioner Mike Barbie and Commissioner Bill Lohman, the Health and Human Services Board, which is also for two commissioners, Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Efferd, the Library Board, myself, Zach Almond, member of the Airport Authority, Scott Efferd and Tommy Jordan to be the alternate, Fire District Commission, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Fur, Senior Services, Commissioner Almond, the RPO, Commissioner Shudo, alternate to RPO, Commissioner Lohman, Stanley Water and Sewer Authority, Commissioner Fur, alternate to the Sewer Authority, Commissioner Barbie, and a member of COG or Central Island Council of Governments, Commissioner Shudo. I'd like to present that to you as a slate.
We have a motion to accept.
Did he say an alternate to the?
We did. He did not. Let's take that slate as presented. We have a motion to fill all of those seats minus one as a slate. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fur. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven to zero. If possible, we need to select an alternate for the Central Island Council of Government. Is there anyone that would willing to be that alternate? I think all of our commissioners already serve on two boards now. County Manager Lucas.
What else I can just say? If I can't make it, I'll just see if somebody can fill it, if that's okay?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Yeah.
So we will officially leave that particular seat open for right now. Next item on the reorganization agenda is to establish the meeting dates for December, for 2022. The Board traditionally meets the first and third Monday of each month except for May, June, July, August, September, and December. The time of the meeting is usually 6:00 PM, and our proposed schedule is below. It's on page two of your reorganizational meeting. I'm assuming by now you guys have had a chance to look at that. Is there any discussion or issue with the dates presented on that calendar?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve those meeting dates for 2022.
We have a motion to approve the dates as presented by Commissioner Efferd. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Almond. Any discussion? County Manager Lucas, do I need to read these out, these dates for the public record?
It's your, it's totally your call.
It's going to be published anyway, so then I won't worry about it.
You want to?
Well, all right, fine. So just for the record, the Stanley County Board of Commissioner meeting dates for the 2022 calendar year will be January 3, Tuesday, January 18, Monday, February 7, and Monday, February 21, Monday, March 7, and Monday, March 21, Monday, April 4, and Monday, April 18, Monday, May 16, Monday, June 6, Tuesday, July 11, Monday, August 8, Tuesday, September 6, Monday, October 3, and Monday, October 17, Monday, November 7, and Monday, November 21, and December 5. The two Tuesdays are being moved for federal holidays. For the discussion, can I get a, all in favor of the presented calendar for 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, just note that July 11 is actually Monday, it's not Tuesday, it's just a typo.
Did I say Tuesday?
Well, it's typed in there, it's Tuesday.
Oh, you get it. People are trying to miss me on my first day. I'll say that. During any regular meeting of the Board, the county commissioners, I'm sorry, during any regular meeting of the Board, the county commissioners, in order to act as their capacity as the Board of Governors for the Greater Bayden Water and Sewer District or for the Pontypoint Water District may at their discretion recess a commissioner's regular meeting and reconvene as the Board of Governors of either of the above two entities in order to conduct business on management of that entity. Any questions on that? No action is needed. We're going to move on to the regular agenda. That ends the reorganization agenda. Thank you, guys, for bearing with me as we get through that. Now, welcome to the normal Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 6, 2021. I'm glad you're all here tonight. I see quite a few faces. We do have quite a few sign up for public comments, so thank you, guys, for doing that, for being part of the process. I'm going to ask Commissioner Scott Efferd to give the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start our invocation tonight, you know, we are in full swing of the holidays right now, and holidays is a busy time of year, but please remember those that have lost loved ones during this year. Been a lot of folks, and it affects people differently during the holidays, but it's tough when you, when you have that, that place where somebody had sit in a chair for all those years and they're not there anymore. Remember those, especially during this time. So if you would, join me in a word of prayer. My grace heavenly Father, we humbly come to you tonight, Lord, thanking you for the many blessings. And, Lord, I pray a special prayer on for those who've lost loved ones this year, Lord, just lift them up, comfort them, Lord, during this time of year. And, Lord, as we honor Pearl Harbor Day tomorrow, Lord, I pray for our veterans, for what they've done for this country. And, Lord, I pray for our military and their families, being away from home during the holidays. Just be with them, lift them up, comfort them, Lord, in the only ways that you know how. And I pray for our doctors, our nurses, our healthcare workers, Lord, as we continue to fight COVID. I just pray that you'll be with them. And, Lord, I pray for those who are in hospitals, just lift them up, touch them in the only ways that you can. And, Lord, I pray for this Board as we make decisions for our county, just give us the strength and the wisdom to make the right decisions. And, Lord, thank you for the ones that came out this way today, Lord, just again, be with them. And, Lord, just lift us, lift us all up, that we will just seek you in everything that we say and do. These things I ask in your precious name that we pray. Amen. If y'all would stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You've all had a chance to look over tonight's agenda. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion, Mr. Lohman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fur. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. To continue along the tradition that Commissioner, I'm having a hard time remembering everybody's last name now, that Commissioner Lohman had started a little last year. I like the idea of having the public comments during the beginning. There are a few of you here that I see have signed up for public comments that are on an agenda item for City Lake. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you guys to hold your comments until that agenda item comes up. There are some others here that have just signed up for public comments not about the resolution that doesn't have a public hearing, so I would like to offer those folks to speak first. Is there anyone that would like to have a public comment that for some reason did not sign up? Okay. Then I'm going to start at the top of this list, and I'm going to ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes or less, because we have quite a few speakers tonight. I'm going to start with Thomas Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. New Chairman, Vice Chair, and the rest of the commissioners. My name is Thomas Townsend. I want to take an opportunity to personally thank you for attempting to pass a resolution showing your rejection of mandatory vaccinations. However, it's extremely sad that it appears to have taken electoral challenge and the Sixth Circuit Court decision to persuade you to act for the will of the people. Yes, this should have been voted in and passed a long time before now, as many individuals have felt they were unduly forced to take the jab in order to continue to provide for their families. Yet I acknowledge that this is a good first step to show the people of Stanley County you truly care about their precious, what is precious to them, which is their individual freedoms. I am curious, however, since your resolution is almost identical to the one in Brunswick County passed last week, I would ask that you add back two extremely important pieces to that first paragraph. Whereas, the freedom to make personal health choices is one of the most fundamental human rights protected under the Bill of Rights of the United States Constitution. This vital paragraph should be included back into your resolution, since it makes the resolution so much stronger, given meaning to its necessity, and affirms your oath to uphold the Constitution you were sworn to uphold when you entered this office. The last paragraph, you also took out the part which states, "County Board Commissioners upholds the United States Constitution and fully supports," et cetera, et cetera. Again, this portion should be reinserted into your resolution. It is imperative that the voters of Stanley County understand and know your commitment to the principles and laws of the United States Constitution. Also, in the "therefore" section, I would like to see you add "after but reject policies of mandatory vaccination," the additional verbiage by both public and private entities. This is important because it sends the message that no one in Stanley County should lose a job over their personal choice concerning vaccines. And lastly, regarding the resolution, I think it would make your resolution so much more effective if you would add the sentence, "We urge North Carolina Department of Labor Commissioner John Dobson to reject implementation of the vaccine mandate should the courts rule in OSHA's favor with an expectation of full support by any and any needed action by Republicans in the state legislature." This addition would call for specific action by state officials to fight should the courts prevail with OSHA mandate. Finally, in closing, my hope moving forward is that this county commission finds the strength, wisdom, and intestinal fortitude to work with our school board and our health department to put a stop to their unconstitutional mask mandates and the ridiculous quarantine policy of sending home healthy students for 14 days at a time just because somebody in their class came down and tested positive for COVID. This strips them of the constitutional right to an education and just puts them further and further behind in their studies. This policy also puts an undue burden on the families, the parents, who now must either miss work or often pay someone to look after their children sent home needlessly. By this time, science has proven beyond a shadow of a doubt that children are extremely low risk for any serious injury to their health, and even adults have a 99.7 survival rate if they are infected. This, along with the facts that point out that natural immunity lasts much longer and is many times more effective than the shot, should influence you to fight against these mandates in our schools and fight for individual freedoms for our children. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Townsend. Next up, I believe, on the same topic, Mr. Joshua Ballinger.
Got it down to three minutes. Hopefully, it's funny. You mentioned the Gettysburg Address. Seven score and 18 years ago, a great man named Abraham Lincoln stood on a blood-soaked field in reference to time span. Many people remember the start of his speech verbatim. He was talking about the span of time that it took for Americans to lose sight of what truly makes America great. It is the essence that all men are equal in the eyes of God and the law. The time span in which it took Americans to forget was four score and seven years. The country that those soldiers of old who gave their last full measure of devotion to protect seems to be fading away. This is the same country that I dedicated the vast majority of my adult life fighting for. I've served three tours in Iraq and have several close friends whom all volunteered, freely lay down their lives in the defense and the support of the Constitution, that great document that was penned in the spirit of individual freedoms and the United States of America. I hear the term democracy thrown around a lot as a punchline, how having ideas that go against the mob are being labeled as an assault on our democracy. Well, when the comments are being spoken against policy that goes against individual freedoms, it is more in keeping to the true characterization of America. We are a constitutional federal republic. Most people are being taught that they are being selfish when they tell the federal government or any government that there is a point in which individual freedoms are more important than the fear of the mob. The founding document of this country is set up to protect us from this mob. The 51% are not allowed to take away inalienable rights that were granted not by the government but by God. I'm pretty sure that the founding fathers realized that there are rights that while not directly spelled out are still inherent rights, that this would be the purpose behind the Ninth Amendment. This is directly relevant to vaccine mandates, as there is a separation in class on their proposed implementation. If you have 99 employees, you don't have to require the vax. If you have 100, you're in trouble unless you do, as we say. Unless, of course, you are a postal worker or a congressional aide, then the rules don't apply to you. If we are all created equal, if we all are equally afforded the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, why does some get to choose while others are forced? In two years, one-tenth of a score, and 2% of the timeframe mentioned from Mr. Lincoln, we have allowed the fear of the mob, our elected officials, and in a majority of cases, unelected officials, to strip us of our individual freedoms, the right to practice our religion freely unless we obey their mandates, the rights for our children to receive a quality education unless we put a muzzle on their face. And now it seems that we are about to lose the right to provide for our families unless we get a shot. This all for a virus that has a 98% chance of recovery. I urge the Board in keeping with the essence of the Constitution, ban vaccine mandates in any form of vaccine passports in Stanley County. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Ballinger. And finally, I believe that was it for that particular, nope, I'm sorry, I have one more. Mr. Kelly Louder?
Thank you.
I thought I forgot you.
Howdy, y'all. Sorry, I just came from putting signs in the ground for my sister's campaign. All right. I echoed the sentiments of the previous two speakers, absolutely. Let me get through my three-minute spiel. I come before the Board today in support of the resolution force. As a veteran, I'm willfully submitted to vaccinations against a multitude of diseases. I'm by no means an anti-vaxer. I was happy to see the vaccine produced and encouraged that it could help protect the infirm and elderly. Early on in the pandemic, I learned that various comorbidities were key risk factors. I endeavored to get more exercise and sunlight. In my experience, all my friends that did that survived. In December 2020, my then-14-year-old daughter and I contracted COVID from a close friend who works for the funeral home and was regularly tested. I had temperature fluctuations for a couple of days before recovering. My daughter lost her sense of smell. I absolutely realized that I was lucky that my symptoms were so mild and thankful that I knew that my exposure, knew of my exposure so that I could quarantine and ensure my body was perfectly prepared to fight the illness. In February, I gave blood and was subsequently informed that I did have antibodies, confirmed by the serology test, and my blood plasma would be used for convalescent plasma therapy to hopefully save someone's life. Of note, at the time, vaccinated individuals could not give blood. As a scientist and researcher, I started reading voraciously about the new vaccines. I was skeptical but hopeful that a vaccine would be successful against an ancient family of viruses that also cause the common cold. Upon seeing initial very positive reports of efficacy, I encouraged my parents to take the vaccine. Being former smokers of venerable age, I felt that they carried high risk of COVID complications. Because I'm a severe asthmatic, I live most of my days feeling slightly sick. It's a rare day that I feel chipper all day. The upside is that due to a persistent layer of sputum in my lungs, I now rarely catch whichever illness is making its rounds through the school system. Now, for the first time in my life, I am being coerced to submit to a vaccine against an illness I've already endured. I'm routinely asked to wear a mask to ward off a virus to which I'm already immune. My chances of dying from a second bout of COVID are essentially zero. There are two major issues that need to be addressed due to insufficient public discourse. The first is that our media, social media, and federal government refuse to acknowledge the robust immunity afforded to previously infected individuals. At least 100 million Americans have now been infected and carry this immunity. An observational study in Israel showed that this immunity was between 13 and 27 times better than that afforded by the vaccines. The current administration has no desire to investigate or discuss natural immunity. The second issue is a dire warning. Fighting a pandemic with a leaky vaccine is a recipe for disaster. Leaky vaccines may also be called non-sterilizing or imperfect vaccines. In 1907, a Hungarian veterinarian named Josek Merrick isolated and discovered a disease in fowl caused by a DNA virus. At the time, the disease was a nuisance and caused discomfort to birds and some financial loss to poulterers. In 1970, a vaccine was introduced against Merck's disease. As the vaccine gained greater adoption, the virus began to mutate. By 2015, research had confirmed that what was once a nuisance disease among fowl was now 100% fatal within 10 days to any unvaccinated fowl. Our domestic poultry is now vaccinated in ovo or in the egg to prevent this. Ordinarily, viruses mutate to become less lethal and more contagious over time, but that's under normal evolutionary pressure. We have exactly one data point regarding the mutation of viruses under artificial selection pressures induced by a non-sterilizing vaccine. We've never mass adopted a non-sterilizing vaccine, and we've never advocated a vaccine for survivors of a given disease. We are in uncharted waters. No one knows the folly of this plan. To make matters worse, let me point out that COVID-19 is caused by a single-stranded RNA virus as opposed to a double-stranded DNA virus, this more fault tolerant.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, sir.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Okay. Some of our most accomplished scientists and medical doctors are being aggressively censored at the behest of routinely wrong bureaucrats. Quite frankly, I'm disgusted at what the government I once faithfully served has become. I implore this Board to adopt the resolution in support of individual freedom. Our local governments may be the last defense against the overreach of an increasingly socialist and authoritarian government. This is the hill I will die on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Louder. I think that was, was there anyone else that wanted to speak on the proposed vaccine resolution? Okay, I'm going to move on to the next person, Ms. Patty Crump.
Chairman Jordan, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm Patty Crump, and I live on the Southern End. I'm here tonight because I'm very concerned about the new SEL curriculum that was recently voted in by our school board. SEL stands for Social Emotional Learning. And when this program is packaged and sold, it sounds really good. We all know many of our school-aged children are in desperate need of social and emotional support, especially in light of COVID and how this pandemic has created an environment of isolation and fear. But I also know from my own research, and anyone who has done a half hour of reading could tell you the same, that SEL is another way of very manipulatively ushering in CRT or Critical Race Theory. That is the truth, but I don't want you to take my word for it. I would recommend that you visit this website and do some digging. It's edfirstnc.org, and I will send you an email later tonight so that you can have this information. This organization was born out of Raleigh, North Carolina. It's homegrown, and they have recently had featured segments on the Steve Bannon Show and on Fox News. The reason I'm approaching you tonight is because I wanted to draw your attention to the action of the county commissioners in Johnston County, North Carolina. Last week, I spoke with Larry Wood, the vice chairman of the commission, to get more details after I had been pointed in the direction of a news article. Back in June, the county commissioners in Johnston County withheld $7.9 million from the public schools until the school board could pass an acceptable policy preventing the teaching of CRT. As a result, several commissioners and school board members worked alongside the central office staff, and they created an amended policy to Policy 5100, which included administrative action, including possible dismissal of any staff member out of compliance. The policy can be found on their website and entails description of how CRT damages individuals and the community. individuals and the community. Once the school board and the commissioners were satisfied with the policy, the commissioners then fully funded the school system, and that wasn't until October. So they worked on this together from June to October. I think this is an excellent example of a county commission using its influence by representing the will of the people and demanding certain standards of the school system. On your own website, you've listed some of your primary missions, which are to enhance education, to ensure safety, health, and wellness, to promote culture, and to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. I believe it is worth every bit of your efforts to look further into the four-year SEL curriculum that our school system just voted into existence, which, by the way, what they just voted into existence was developed and adopted not by the superintendent of curriculum and instruction, who has her doctorate in the field and was hired for this kind of work. She actually had no part of the process in any way, and I know because I've asked the questions. And I think that's very odd, and I think we need to ask more questions. You control a large portion of their funding, and as a parent with one child left in the school system and as a taxpayer, I would feel very much obliged to you if you would consider the actions of the Johnston County commissioners as a potential path for Stanley County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Crump. That's the last of the public comments that are not related to an agenda item. I'm going to move on to agenda item number two, the Stanfield recreational grant request. Presenter is Bridget Helms. Good evening, Ms. Bridget.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Bridget Helms. I am the town administrator for the town of Stanfield. It's good to see you all. Thank you very much for this opportunity and for your support of the recreation in all areas of Stanley County. In September 2020, the town of Stanfield was awarded a Parks and Recreational Trust Fund Grant, a Part F grant, for a $425,000 project in Pete Hinkle Park. This is a matching grant of which the town is responsible for 50% at 212,500. This Part F grant is comprised of many elements, including the purchase of additional park property, construction of a new restroom, repair of concrete steps, adding cornhole, horseshoes, disc golf, paved, and natural walking trails. I am here presenting this evening a request for $10,000 to reduce the amount of the town's expense for two new playgrounds, also an element of our Part F grant, ordered on November the 5th. You should have received an order form showing the total expense at 52,986. The town of Stanfield's 50% match is $26,493. $10,000 from the county recreational grant will reduce the cost to the taxpayers of the town to $16,493 for this portion of the Part F grant. Overall, Stanfield will still be expanding over $200,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Bridget. Public commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Bridget?
Yes, how many residents do you have in Stanfield, about?
About 1,600.
Okay, and for the park, people from outside the town use your parks all the time?
Definitely. We do have quite a bit of development going on on the southern corner of Stanfield, not in the town limits.
Correct, so your park's open to everybody?
And our park is open, and it's also used quite a bit by the school, which is directly across the street.
Bridget, what'd you say your Part F grant was?
A $425,000 project, of which we pay 50%, 212,500.
How you doing? I know the last two communities that came up and requested the funds that I was against this whole project to start with because I thought it didn't think it was right for people one in the county paying for parks and recreations and another in the county. But I'm going to open the door now because since we've already got two areas that has this grant, then eventually the whole county is going to be paying for the whole county. So I just wanted you to know that I am conservative and want to make sure tax dollars go in the right places, but since we're going to move forward this anyway, then I'm not going to vote against that.
I understand. Thank you.
Bridget, you mentioned the town was going to purchase additional land for the park. How much land?
We did purchase an additional nine acres. We purchased it the year before. We were granted the... awarded the grant, but that was included as a stipulation. We had done previous paperwork to include it, so it did pay for half of that cost.
Any further questions from commissioner?
I make a motion we approve the grant.
We have a motion to approve the grant as presented for $10,000. Commissioner Shudo, take it. My Commissioner Fer. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bridget.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Social Services presentation. That is from Ms. Dolly Clayton.
Good evening, commissioners. See if we can get the PowerPoint to come up. I don't know the password.
It should be on a sticky note up there, Dolly.
Okay. All right, so tonight I'm presenting to you about the Department of Social Services as part of our departmental highlights to the Board of County Commissioners, so I'm pleased to come to you and tell you about all the amazing work that the staff are doing in Social Services. So I know you can't read this slide, but this is the organizational chart for the Department of Social Services. The yellow highlighted are the ones where we currently have vacancies. And so you'll see that we are the second-largest department in Stanley County government, and as such, we have 93 full-time employees, we have three part-time positions, and one temporary staffing position. Currently, the agency is challenged by eight vacancies, which I will discuss later in this On this slide, you can see some of the budgetary information for the department. With the department budget at just over $8.8 million, you can see that on the next slide, 45% of its funding is from county dollars. Sorry, it's from county dollars. And then, however, the total budgetary impact of the agency to the county is just over $108 million, leaving the county's contribution at just 3% of this impact. As you can see, the financial impact of the Medicaid insurance and food and nutrition benefits accounts for approximately $96 million in funds to the local economy for those medical services and food benefits. This next series of slides lists some of the mandatory federal and state services that are provided by the agency. We have three primary mandates: public assistance entitlement programs, which are for those that meet certain required eligibility requirements, such as Medicaid, food stamps, and energy assistance programs, as well as the Child and Adult Protective Services for abused, neglected, dependent children, and exploited, disabled adults. There are also a number of other mandatory services that are listed on this slide, including guardianship services, child support enforcement, daycare subsidy, foster care, and adoption services. We are also required to assist every Medicaid and food stamps applicant with photo registration. And then you may be surprised to see fishing licenses on this slide, but these are free to anyone who is receiving food and nutrition benefits. Administration, basically, we provide... We do scanning of records to try to reduce the number of papers in the office. We see on average 186 people in our offices every day, so we've got a lot of traffic that's coming into our offices. On this slide lists a myriad of income maintenance programs. These are those means-tested entitlement programs available to those who meet the income eligibility requirements, and we will talk more about some of these programs on the next slides. The unduplicated count for physical year 2021 Medicaid enrollment was just over 15,000, and we can see the impact of the pandemic on the constituents in that over 1,800 folks were added to the Medicaid rolls during this physical year. This slide also provides the average monthly enrollment count and October's current enrollment. There were a number of pandemic-related waivers to Medicaid, including extending Medicaid benefits during the pandemic and various modifications to the eligibility determination process. We are anticipating a number of impacts to the recipients and to our eligibility workers once the public health emergency ends. NC Health Choice is similar to Medicaid, but it's for low-income children when their parent's income makes them ineligible for Medicaid or when private or employer-sponsored health insurance is still unaffordable to them. This slide provides the unduplicated enrollment for physical year 2021, the average monthly enrollment count, and October's current enrollment. Again, there are a number of pandemic-related waivers that impacted this program as well. On this slide, you will see the demographics of who is receiving Medicaid and Health Choice, and it's just slightly different than our overall county demographics, which is 80% white, 11% African-American, 2% Asian, and 2% Hispanic, according to one of the census websites that I went to. So I had the Medicaid unduplicated count for 2021, but unfortunately, we were unable to do an unduplicated count for food and nutrition services. However, we can see that the impact of the pandemic on constituents and that we had over 1,200 folks added to the food stamps rolls during the physical year. This slide also provides the average monthly count and the average monthly FNS benefit, which you'll see was nearly $500. There were a number of pandemic-related waivers to food stamps, including extended benefits during the pandemic, waiving recertifications, maximizing the amount of benefits given, and then other various modifications to the eligibility services process, determination process. And we, again, anticipate a number of end impacts to the recipients and to our workers, eligibility workers, once the public health emergency ends. Similar to the Medicaid and Health Choice demographics, while the majority of recipients are white, a greater number of the African-American and Asian and other races are recipients than is representative of our overall Stanley County demographics. The next three slides, 15, 16, and 17, talk about work first, family assistance, as well as special assistance. I'm just going to skip over these. These were in your packet because we only have a small number of folks who are receiving this service for our programs. Child Support is a program to help children receive financial support from the noncustodial parent, and as you can see on this slide, in physical year 2021, over $3.8 million was collected by this program, and those funds go straight to the caregiver or the parent that's caring for those children. Child Care Subsidy is provided to low-income families to enable parents to maintain or seek employment to support their families. These funds are limited, and once all the funds are allocated to a child's childcare slot, new childcare applicants have to go on a waiting list. The current waiting list has 95 children on it. That means there are 95 children who are waiting for a spot for this daycare subsidy. As you can see, in October, the average payment was $470, and we assisted 368 children with subsidy payments. The Low Income Energy Assistance Program gets a one-time payment to the utility vendor to pay a heating bill. Applications are currently being accepted for this program for households with a member who is 60 years or older or a disabled adult. The program will open up to everyone in the public January the 1st. On this slide, you will see both the regular LEAP program and the pandemic LEAP program. There's really no difference in this program, but due to the pandemic, the state automated payments for individuals who were eligible in the previous year to reduce COVID exposure risks to this vulnerable population and to the DSS staff by not requiring the face-to-face or come into the office to apply process. The Crisis Intervention Program provides $600 per year payment to financially eligible individual or family experienced a heating or cooling crisis. You will see two different SIP funds. One is derived from federal funds and can be any utility vendor, provided they have an agreement with our agency. The other is Energy Neighbor, which is a fund specific to Duke Utility Company and to their customers. This slide here lists a myriad of social work programs and services. While some of these programs do have eligibility requirements, some are provided regardless of income, and we'll talk more about some of these programs on the following slides. Adult Protective Services is provided when we receive a report of suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation of a disabled adult. Sometimes, we receive reports regarding individuals who are not necessarily disabled, but in the conditions in which they live are concerning to others. We can offer services if the adult has the capacity to make decisions for him or herself, but we cannot necessarily force them to change their current living conditions. We can only offer referral services relative to the individual's needs. However, when they are disabled, if they have the capacity to make decisions for themselves and accept services from us, we can develop a service plan to address the reported concerns. If the adult does not have the capacity to make decisions for him or herself, then other legal options are considered. As such, DSS is the only disinterested party, third-party guardian that can be appointed when there's no other options for decision-making on behalf of a disabled adult. In 2021, we provided guardianship services to 21 individuals. These individuals range in age from their 20s to over 60. And so if we've got someone we're guardian of in their 20s, it's highly unlikely, not impossible, but we may continue to be their guardian well into their 60s, so beyond even my lifetime. Child Protective Services actually provides two services: the investigative and family assessment, where we investigate reports of abuse, neglect, dependency, and the in-home services, where we work with the family in their home when we have confirmed abuse, neglect, or dependency allegations that are not severe enough to warrant agency custody. In-home services are provided to families while the children remain in the home, and the goal is to keep the family together. There are no financial guidelines for these services, meaning that we work with families who are financially independent and families who are financially struggling. So it's hard to picture what this work looks like from an outsider's perspective, so I asked one of the staff to give me rough estimates of caseloads and time investment in these cases. So each CPS worker receives on average of 10 to 15 new cases every month. This is on top of their current caseload. They have a 45-day timeframe in which to complete the investigation, and while there are approximately 225 work hours available for every 45-day case investigation, considering that it takes a minimal of 67 hours to work each case, surely you can see how challenging it can be for staff to effectively manage one caseload, given the hours of work for each case. And you'll see here listed out, these are approximate about how long it takes to do these various activities: initiating a case, five hours; documentation, 17 hours; maintaining contact to collateral throughout the 45-day period, 13 hours, and so on and so forth. Foster Care provides safe and stable living environment for children who are removed from the custody of their caregiver. In 2021, we provided services to 51 children in Stanley County. To serve these children, we also recruit, train, and license appropriate foster families to provide these homes. We have 27 agency-licensed homes. These foster parents work in collaboration with our agency, with the birth parents, and with community agencies to achieve the child's permanent plan. Currently, we have 36 children in custody. 10 of these are in out-of-county placement, due in part due to a lack of current capacity and in part due to the special needs that some of these children have for specialized and higher levels of care needs. Adoption services are offered to find a permanent home for children when children are not able to be reunified with their parents or family. Agency staff assists with adoptions for children in the foster care system, as well as for stepparent, relative, and independent adoptions. On this slide, you can see the numbers of both adoptions and preplacement assessments that we've completed that year. So this slide is a little hard to see, but it's a list of all the various required audits, reviews, and other work impact that require the staff's time and attention. Some of... Some of these audits, reviews occur annually, lasting several days. Others are monthly or for an hour or so. But each of these represents time that the agency staff have to devote to the monitoring preparation that takes away from the actual provision of services to the public. So to give you an example, currently, we are undergoing the recipient eligibility determination audit, called Rita. This process generates 20 cases per month over a 10-month audit period for a total of 200 cases. If in this audit, the findings result in that we made an eligibility determination error, and there was an overpayment of benefits, then the county is responsible for the repayment of this error, and there's no maximum of repayment for such errors. So I want to talk to you a little bit about some of our challenges, specifically related to CPS staffing. I currently have, this is Child Protective Services, I currently have 13 Child Protective Services social work positions, providing investigative family assessments and in-home services. I have five vacancies across this one unit. I currently only have four tenured staff with greater than two years of experience. I have four newer staff who have been with the agency less than six months. The result of this staffing challenge is that I have a high risk of burnout for my tenured staff and a high risk of critical errors due to a lack of experience in experienced staff working the complex cases. And while I have two experienced supervisors managing this unit, they are also experiencing the stress of the workers in that they too are going out into the field, shadowing these workers, and in some cases, working the cases themselves due to the staffing shortages and turnovers. Our situation in Stanley is not unique. Across the state, other DSS directors are reporting similar staffing issues and shortages. And finally, I want to talk to you about some future funding requests. I currently have one second-shift on-call social worker who works a rotating weekday weekend schedule for after-hours coverage. One person is just not enough. Plus, this rotating schedule is particularly challenging for its impact on one's family life. This second-shift on-call person has alleviated some of the stress on the existing staff by providing some of the after-hours coverage. But I still have existing staff who have to pick up on the after-hours coverage on the days when there is no second shift on-call and who serve as backup when we are inundated with calls. So our agency provides this service 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. My second-shift worker has instances where the call volume and case complexity has been such that he worked 24 hours straight. When 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. workers have to cover the on-call, they pick up the role at 5:01 p.m. and run until 8:29 the next morning, and then are back again at work during the regular day-to-day. I also need another social worker for foster care and guardianship cases. Currently, we have 36 children in foster care, which means that the current staff's caseload is greater than the recommended 15 each. We have 17 currently guardianship cases, and these are split between my two Adult Protective Services workers who are investigating those cases of abuse or neglect of a disabled adult. And while there's no caseload standard for guardianship cases, it would be helpful to have another person to help manage them. Depending on the complexity of the individual, these can take up a lot of time. And while not mentioned previously, the Adult Protective Workers are also conducting facility reviews for assisted living and family care homes, and they conduct complaint investigations on them. I'd also like to add a human resource aide to assist with transportation of both the foster children and guardianship individuals to family visitation, medical, and other appointments. Having this transportation assistance would be especially helpful for out-of-county placements, as driving to pick them up out of county, bringing them here to Stanley County, and making the return trip can involve into at least half a day of work from just driving to and fro. And finally, I'd like to have a quality assurance, income maintenance caseworker. This position would really pay for itself in that if the person prevents one eligibility error, and as a reminder, there's no maximum repayment amount for a Medicaid eligibility error, the county would be responsible for the full payment, which with the hospital and nursing home payments could run into the thousands of dollars. And that's my presentation for you tonight. What questions do you have?
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. Commissioners, have any questions?
Just real quick, and maybe Andy can answer this. You're the number two with employees. What's our biggest department?
Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office, okay. And second, I'm looking at this. We have, what, 13,000 to 15,000 people receiving Medicaid in our county?
Mm-hmm.
So that's basically almost one-fourth of our citizens that are on Medicaid. And then I appreciate the staff and what you guys do, because you guys got the job and your people, that they deal with a lot of negativity. By negativity, you're going into situations that are not good. People either need money, they need help, they're trying to get, you know, abuse cases and trying to get money for electricity and stuff. So I know that's a lot of, there's got to be a lot of stress on the staff, because you deal with that on a daily basis. So I appreciate all that y'all do over there, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Dolly, I do have a question or two. I know that social services, I think, is all based on income levels. Am I correct?
The eligibility services, the income maintenance programs, most of those are, but things like Child Protective Services, Adult Protective Services, they're not necessarily limited to income. And so we may go into a $15,000 house, or we may go into a $400,000 house.
The programs that are income-based, family of four, can you give me an idea of what income level?
I don't have those memorized in my head, but I can be sure to send you an email, all of you an email, with some general information related to that. So a family of four, it will depend on the program and also depend on, in some cases, the age of the individual and whether or not they're disabled, but I'll make sure that I get some of that. Do you specifically want that for the income maintenance programs? Is there a particular one that you're interested in?
Not a particular one, you know, but I would like to know different programs, what the income, because we run into people that may qualify, that may not have been the social services. And then I guess my last question, I know you had eight vacancies. Compared to, how long you been here now? Over two years?
Three years.
Three years?
Three years now.
When you first got here, how many vacancies did you have?
We had a pretty good number when I first got here, about a year and a half into it. We were nearly fully staffed in Child Protective Services, and so it's sort of a rotating process, and it just depends.
Would you say the vacancy rate right now is pretty norm, or is it?
I think it's a little high right now, particularly relative to the work that we're doing. But when talking with other social services directors, they are seeing similar challenges. And related to finding, to fill in the gaps, we're currently using a staffing agency that specializes in social work, particularly for Child Protective Services, and so that is helping some, but they even are having challenges with finding adequate staff, because there's a certain level of education that's needed, and also there's some specialized training that's required before they can even hit the ground running.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. You have one of the largest and most complicated departments in the county, and I get the pleasure sometimes of hearing your presentations twice in a row. And it is, you have a lot of information that has to be understood and mastered, and you have, my sincere respect, it's a very hard department to manage, and no amount of resources that we could give you would ever be enough is the problem. I mean, if you have more tools, you can do more things, but you guys do a great job, and I'll be on the lookout to try to get you help again.
Well, thank you so much again. I do want to acknowledge that the staff that I have are really phenomenal, and they are very dedicated, both to the work that they're doing every day and seeing how they can help people and making those connections with other agencies who in the county to make sure that people get their needs met.
Mr. Chairman, I do one last question, Dolly. The heating assistance programs.
Yes.
Those are based on income levels, correct?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, and I guess we publicize those programs? I hope we do.
We do, and in fact, this year, there's a brand-new low-income household water assistance program that's just brand-new, that just started in December to assist folks who are at risk or have gotten their water turned off, to make payments to keep that from happening. And so that's brand-new, literally just started in December, and we are currently accepting applications for that as well. Currently prioritizing those who are at risk for cutoff and those who have been cut off, but certainly, if that's a concern, then that's a great program as well.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly.
Thank you.
The next item on tonight's agenda is a COVID-19 update. Presenter's going to be David Jenkins, our Health and Human Services Director. Evening, Director Jenkins.
Good evening, Chairman Jordan and Commissioners. Hope you're doing well this evening. All right, COVID update for this evening. So first, I want to provide you an update on the latest data that we have. This is, of course, through the weekend, which is Friday after 5 through the weekend. The daily cases, in this case, it would be over the past couple of days, is 59. Pediatric daily cases are at 15, hospitalizations at 7, cumulative cases at this time at 12,233. Deaths, unfortunately, for Stanley County are at 216. Percent positives at 8%, breakthrough cases currently 570, first dose at 44, and second dose at 42% for Stanley County. This is just a graph of how we've trended since May 2 of '21. And you can see we've had the increase back when Delta was more prevalent. More recently, we've seen those numbers decline, which we're very thankful for. Our last percent positive, which we'd report out weekly, was at 8%. Looking at the numbers, we hope we go back down below 8% again, but we'll continue to monitor it as we move through the holidays and people get together, you know, for Christmas and whatnot. It's a level of county transmission, no, Stanley County is not a darker shade of red, it just kind of highlights where we are on the map. We are in that higher level of county transmission. That's based on the number of cases. It's a formula for number of cases per 100,000, so, but we still have a high level of county transmission, even though we're about at 8% for percent positivity for the county. Cumulative total, last month, I provided you this data based on age for vaccination rates, and you can see the differences. Notice this time, 5 to 11 age group has been broken out, so about 4% of the population of 5 to 11-year-olds have been vaccinated for Stanley County, and you can see some increases in the 12 to 17. We've increased pretty much across the board by a couple of percentage points. 50 to 64s standing pack currently at 57, and 65 to 74 at 75%. Latest information on the Moderna and Pfizer boosters and J&amp;Js, obviously, we're giving out first and second doses of Moderna. Obviously, the point of that is that the dose of Moderna or Pfizer was six months ago, and if you're 18 and older, you can get a booster as well. Johnson &amp; Johnson booster, 18 or older and vaccinated more than two months ago with the J&amp;J vaccine. The reason for that is we're not seeing the same amount of efficacy in the J&amp;J as we are with some of the messenger RNA, Moderna, and Pfizer boosters. And then Pfizer for Children, we're currently providing at 5, for the 5 to 11-year-olds. And this is our current schedule, Moderna boosters on Mondays and Tuesdays, so Pfizer boosters we're providing on Wednesdays, and Pfizer for Children, 5 to 11, on Fridays. And again, the COVID-19 vaccine hotline is 980-323-0205, if you don't want to know anyone that's interested in receiving the vaccine. This information came out last week from Department of Health and Human Services. It's the Omicron variant that many of you have probably heard about. It's a new variant identified in South Africa. This is designated Omicron and declared a variant of concern by the World Health Organization, so we're continuing to monitor this. It's rapidly replaced the Delta variant across South Africa, which is suggesting it's more transmissible, but we'll still have to get enough data that determination can be made. So it is concerning. It's been detected in a growing list of countries. Of course, United States has had several cases now. There's a lot of recent sequencing of this data going on in North Carolina. Most everything's showing up at Delta right now, but over the next two weeks to a month, we'll probably identify Omicron here in North Carolina as well. Has a number of mutations in the spike protein, and that indicates it could result in a decreased protection following vaccination or past infection. So the immunity that you get from being infected or a vaccine may not hold up as well. That's something that will need to be determined. No laboratory epidemiological studies showing whether, what degree Omicron can evade this at this time, so again, we'll continue to monitor that as well. It is expected, however, that vaccines currently authorized or approved in U.S. will remain effective against severe outcomes, so that is good news, once we do see an increase in the Omicron variant here in the United States and in North Carolina. So the FDA continues to evaluate the performance in the test for this. Evidence so far suggests that all diagnostic tests will work to detect Omicron, so it's good that we can identify rather than, and hopefully, we'll have successful detection moving forward with our current testing in place. What we don't know, there's a lot we don't know, but no actual data yet on immune escape, vaccine effectiveness, transmissibility, or illness severity. While some of the mutations have been associated with changes, there's minimum to no data on the actual behavior of the viral variant at this time. And we're anticipating Omicron is, like I said, is in the U.S. now and probably coming in North Carolina several days to weeks. And guidance issued from CDC on testing and self-quarantine, rare travelers prior to returning from international travel has been implemented, and laboratory and epidemiological data on vaccine-induced and post-infection immunity disease severity and transmissibility will be increasing in the coming weeks, unfortunately. So we'll continue to monitor this information and share with you at your request and as appropriate. So I had a few closing comments, and then I'll obviously turn it over to you for comments or questions as well. Kind of want to review Health 101. You know, everyone should eat a healthy, balanced diet, drink plenty of water, stay active and find time to exercise, avoid use of tobacco and illegal substances. Sure you heard it. Don't marry anybody that smokes or chew, or mess with anybody that does. That little saying that you had. Take your meds that's prescribed by your physician, take your vitamins, and say your prayers. All that's important. Ask you to do all that to stay healthy, but we also ask you to, you know, from the public health standpoint and medical community, that you consider getting the vaccine to best protect yourself and your family from COVID-19. And also, I wanted to mention that note, the flu is on the rise, so please consider getting the flu vaccine as well if you have not already. So, and that's all I have for this evening's presentation. Commissioner?
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Comments in the board?
I have a couple of comments and questions real quick. I mean, a lot of people talk about this as being a 98% survival rate and stuff, or 90, I think in Stanley County, when I did the stats last week. Since the inception of this, it's been like a 98.3% survival rate, which went 1.7 out of every 100 people who test positive for COVID have died. And 1.7% to die is a pretty high rate for a virus compared to like the flu, it's like one, it's way, way like .000 something. I don't think people understand how a 1.7% death rate is extremely high. I mean, how many of us would go on an airplane if you knew that of every 100 people on an airplane, that 1.7% of them would not come off the airplane alive? And then the death rate, oh, the 59 new cases today, I look back at your weekly totals, and other than the Monday after Thanksgiving, because that covered, I think, four or five days, but 59 new cases today, you have to go back to early October to when you had that total that high. So I hope a surge is not starting. And three people died, three Stanley County residents died over the weekend from COVID. And back in August, we had the conversation, I believe I was saying, I hope I'm wrong, that we had the rise in COVID, that deaths would follow, and I hope I was going to be wrong about that. And here's the statistics of the deaths we've had since, let me get this open here. Here's what we've had since August, and compared to the deaths in Stanley County due to COVID, compared to overall deaths in Stanley County. In July, there were 47 deaths in Stanley County, only one was attributed to COVID. In August, there were 61 deaths in Stanley County, 13 were attributed to COVID. In September, 72 people died in Stanley County, 20 were due to COVID. In October, 57 people died in Stanley County, 20 died from COVID. In November, 52 people died in Stanley County, and I don't think they had the quite totals yet, but 16 died from COVID. And it's just sad, and I think you gave the report that of the- And it's just sad, and I think you gave the report that of the first of the 54 we had talked about, I think there were only like two to four breakthrough cases of people who were, of those deaths were vaccinated. That means overwhelmingly, like 90% of the people who died were non-vaccinated, have been non-vaccinated in Stanley County. So I see these statistics, and I just encourage people to get vaccinated. You can get people to get vaccinated. We've had four, Vacandash has had four vaccine clinics with Atrium Hospital, and we've had, in the four, we've had 33, 56, 54, and 71 people receive shots. So I encourage people to get vaccinated because, you know, if this virus only affected oneself, that's one thing, but this virus, it affects the entire community, and it's not going away. So I hope people would be safe out there and make good choices.
Thank you, Commissioner Shudo.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions or comments?
I do have a question. I know back a couple of months ago, you started tracking breakthrough cases, and I believe breakthrough, you said, was 500 and some total?
Yes, sir.
And I asked you how many of those breakthrough cases, cases had resulted in death, and you sent the email the next day with two. Can you update me on that particular statistic?
I don't know that it's changed at this time, Commissioner Lawhan, but let me go back and check. I don't want to speculate and give you misinformation.
So we're not tracking the end result of those breakthroughs?
I'm not tracking it on a, we're not tracking it on a weekly basis, but we have that data, we have privy to that data, so we can certainly pull that information for you.
I would like it, and I think the community deserves to know those numbers also.
If that's something you would like to be published, we can certainly consider that, and I can talk to Mr. Lucas if that's something you want to publish. Okay, we'll make it happen.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Anybody else? Director Jenkins, we appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. It's a tough job. I hope your, I hope your clinics and COVID procedures and your day-to-day job is finally starting to resemble something like normal?
We're praying it's getting there, but I just want to, if I don't see you again, I want to wish you and y'all's family Merry Christmas. Thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you, Director. Before we do our next agenda item, I'm going to take a five-minute recess to consult with county staff. You used the restroom, now's a good time. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you, guys, for being with us. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Our next item on the agenda is going to be the item number five, the public hearing for consideration of the road name for Lucky Buck Trail. Presenter is Rebecca Burgess, our database coordinator. Evening, Ms. Rebecca.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here with a proposal from the Communications Department to consider an approval for Lucky Buck Trail located off of NC Highway 138, just south of Silver Springs Road. In accordance with the Stanley County Road Name Road Sign and Display Ordinance, the property owners were contacted, and they returned their mailed letter with a request for Lucky Buck Trail to be named on their easement.
This request comes from the Department of Public Health?
Yes, sir.
You guys have got this, you fellow commissioners have this in your packet? Do you have any questions on it? Okay, to proceed with this, it's going to require a public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against? See none? I will declare the public hearing closed. Is there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the proposed name.
Second motion from Vice Chairman Almond, second from Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hold on just a second, please.
Yes, sir.
I believe Lucky Buck Trail is off of Highway 138. Is that correct? It goes off. It's a private drive now, correct?
Not at this time. We're going, that is the request, is to name a private drive to Lucky Buck Trail.
But it is a private drive currently?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I know I had a citizen to call me thinking we were renaming Highway 138.
I do apologize for the phone call.
And I said, no, sir, we're not. So it's, it's a private drive, which will be Lucky Buck if we pass it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of renaming this section of 138 to this private drive on 138, the Lucky Buck Trail? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, sir.
You really messed with me on my first night. The next item on our agenda, number six, Lou Donaldson Boulevard Resolution and a public hearing for that. Presenter is going to be Bob Brimberg.
All right, well, good evening, Commissioners and Chairman Jordan. Good to see you this evening. Just a couple of items on the agenda. One is the Lou Donaldson Boulevard Resolution. This is not a renaming of a road, so not Lucky Buck Trail here, but we're kind of a memorial, or in this case honorary, naming of a section of NC 740. The Baden Town Council has requested that the county commissioners hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to be shared with NC DOT, which supports the designation of a portion of NC 740 as Lou Donaldson Boulevard. Lou Donaldson, Sweet Papa Lou, as he was sometimes called, is a well-known bebop jazz musician, born and raised in Baden. He was inducted in the International Jazz Hall of Fame and is a jazz master, is designated by the National Endowment for the Arts, collaborated with other jazz greats such as Thelonious Monk and John Coltrane. At age 95, he is now semi-retired, but has continued to promote his hometown throughout the years. The town of Baden wishes to designate a section of 740 through Baden as Lou Donaldson Boulevard. This will not change addresses for the businesses or residents along this section of the highway. The effective portion of the highway begins at Shaver Road south of Baden and runs north through Baden to the intersection with Barnhart Road. Approximately 1.7 miles is in the city limits of Baden, with 3.3 miles of the designated portion within the county jurisdiction. Because of that, that's why we're before you this evening, even though it's a town of Baden sort of request, because part of it is in the county jurisdiction, we need to give the public here a chance as well to comment on this and then adopt the resolution requesting the designation of the highway if you so choose. This public hearing was properly advertised through the Stanley News &amp; Press. I'll give you a couple of pictures of Lou there, so you understand. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Brimberg.
You're welcome.
This resolution does require a public hearing. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against? See none? I declare the public hearing closed. One comment for me, and I'm not going to vote for it unless I get to go meet this gentleman and sit with him and listen to some John Coltrane. That would be an awesome experience. Questions or comments from commissioners?
Just real quick, he came to Baden for, I think, their 100th anniversary or something. He was phenomenal, funny, hysterical, and he was like 80-something at the time, and he was, he was a good, a good, one of the treasures of Stanley County. So I make a motion that we approve the request.
We have a motion from Commissioner Shudo.
I'll second that.
Second from Commissioner Eford. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Brimberg. Next item, you might as well not go far.
I'm not.
You do that better than I did, didn't you? Next item on our agenda is the ZA 21-11 BRD Land and Investment Item for City Lake Drive. Presenter Bob Brimberg. Take it away, sir.
I will, and once again, good evening, and I'll encourage you, if you get a chance, you can simply go on YouTube or whatever, you can listen to Lou Donaldson, because there's some very good recordings of his presentations and his music out there. So always encourage that. Good stuff, especially if you like jazz. So there you go. All right, Long Lake Neighborhood. So this is the request from BRD Land and Investment. They propose construction of 186 lot, single-family home subdivision on City Lake Drive, which would be built to conditions which are outlined on a list that you have, we'll go over in just a minute. Sidewalks and curbing are proposed for all the streets. Minimum lot measurements are 60 feet wide, 100 feet deep, minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, but many of the lots are slightly larger. Water and sewer service will be provided by Stanley County Utilities with a new sewage pumping station, which will be constructed by the developer to replace our existing pumping station that Stanley County Utilities has on NC 73. The proposed homes would be at least 1,400 square feet in size, estimated to be priced between $250,000 and $350,000, although that's still, you know, prices on houses keep changing, so by the time we, they break ground and get that underway, that could change. Trails would be constructed and shared space owned by the Homeowners Association, including a Long Lake, the lake that we sometimes think of as City Lake, because it's City Lake Park and City Lake Road, but that's, was the city's water source at one point, and, but the official name of the lake is Long Lake. The proposed subdivision generated about 1,840 daily vehicle trips. This parcel is located in a growth area per the land use plan. Traffic impact analysis has been completed. I'm not sure that made it all the way in your packets, but it's, I'm not sure you want it either. Get my fingers down here to it, because it's about a 30-page document. So if anyone wants to see that, I'd be glad to provide it to you. The transportation impact analysis recommends no improvements or changes to existing intersections, although NC DOT will require left-turn lane at the second proposed entrance. Report from the required community meeting was also in your packet, I believe. Included is a list of conditions, there are 36 of them. This is something new a little bit for us. When we revised the zoning ordinance back in the summer, we included a section to update because it's allowed by the North Carolina General Statutes to allow for something called conditional zoning. I know Mr. Eford's very familiar with this because the city of Locusts use this quite a bit now, and it's common in many counties. Cabarrus uses it almost extensively, almost exclusively, I guess, at this point, and certainly the city of Concord, city of Charlotte, many of them use this type of zoning where you can be very specific about what is and isn't allowed on a particular parcel of property. So it becomes its own zoning district. So that's a little different. This will be the first one we've done. I've got another one pending that'll probably come before you in February, so don't be surprised if I'm back before you with a much smaller subdivision, but with the same sort of a list of conditions there. Let me go ahead and we'll look, kind of get, went over most of this material. The, let's see, yeah, it says list of 36 conditions, so there's all sorts of things here. And again, hopefully, you've had a chance to look at these. Obviously, rezoning it to a conditional district, the roads have to meet NC DOT standards, and of course, would be adaptive NC DOT maintenance. Signage, of course, would have to meet DOT requirements as well. Landscaping that they install would have to be kept in good condition. Setback requirements, our measurements shall be from the closest part of the structure to the property line, which is the way we do it normally with this, but it does, of course, exclude mechanical equipment. The setbacks are a little smaller than what we see in a normal R10 or R20 or RA district with 25-foot front, 5-foot side, 10-foot rear, and 5-foot corner lots, because if a house is on a corner, sometimes you have an extra 10 feet or so in some of the zoning districts. Accessory structures are located in the side or rear yard only, shall be set back 5 feet or more from the side or rear property lines. Landscaping meets our, would have to meet our zoning requirements, the whole landscape section. In the ordinance, Homer Association be established. Amenities will be constructed no later than 50% of the certificates of occupancy being issued. Minimum lot size, we already said 6,000 square feet, and we've got the width, 1,400 square foot minimum lot size. Vents D should not exceed 1.84 units per acre. Home materials limited to fiber cement, sometimes called hardy board, stone, stucco, vinyl, and brick. Each lot have at least two yard trees with a minimum caliper, and I won't go through all that, but lots that are 7,500 square feet or larger shall have at least one additional tree, could be in the rear part of the lot. They're encouraged to maintain any existing trees, if at all possible, as this construction gets underway. All homes shall have a minimum of one-car attached garage. Driveways with paved concrete or asphalt shall accommodate at least four vehicles if no garage is provided. Exposed chimneys consistent with architecture, and it goes on here. This one's an important one maybe to consider. Front wall of all homes shall not run unbroken for a distance of more than 24 linear feet. So that means that the front of a house would not be flat, okay? Wouldn't be one continuous surface. If you think about a standard ranch house or something, sometimes you see that style. Couldn't be that, it's going to have to be broken up, nothing more than a run of 24 feet. So, and your offsets would have to be at least a foot deep. Then talks about roof pitch requirements. See, we can, you can set all sorts of requirements. Obviously, mail kiosk locations, because the U.S. Postal Service requires that these days. See, curbing gutter on all streets, playground, walking trail, homes would have 6-inch or larger eaves and soffits, not including the gutter. Single phase for the construction, 5-foot wide sidewalks on both sides of the street. Again, preserve mature vegetation where possible. Water and sewer meet requirements of the utility department. Construct the sewage pumping station, install hydrants and water lines, meet the requirements of the fire marshal. Stormwater retention ponds meet DEQ requirements. Street lighting would be provided, and the planning board decided it needed to make sure there was some overflow parking, which they have added to the plan to accommodate vehicles that might not fit in those driveways. So that's the, those are the 36 conditions that we created through the planning board and through the planning process. Obviously, you have some leeway here, as you talked to the developer in a minute, to possibly consider, you know, if there are any additions or changes to these that you would like to see. I'll get the image up there, it's kind of hard to see. You hopefully have one in your packet, maybe a little easier to catch. City Lake Drive running from north to south here, Highway 73 is just to the, to the north, just off the map, at the really top edge of the map there. So it's on both sides of City Lake Drive, the kind of white area on the left side of this map is City Lake, and that, of course, is city limits and the city property. This would not go into the city of Albemarle, this is, would be a county area for purpose of zoning as well as taxation and everything else. It's not to be in the city of Albemarle. Okay? All right, let's see, and I think that's it. Oh, that's a street profile, and then I've got some aerial views, it's wooded and some open fields now, so it's the area outlined in the bolder red line. You can see there is water and sewer, county water and sewer available off NC 73 already. And Mr. Wingo, I spoke with him earlier today, and he's worked with the city of Albemarle, and the city of Albemarle is willing to accept the flow, shouldn't be any problem. And you can see, part of this was zoned R20, and the southern portion was zoned RA, and of course, again, you're up against the city limits where the lake is concerned. And another kind of overall step-out view, I know there was a little bit of concern raised in the planning board, which of course did approve this, recommended approving this by 7-0 vote, or excuse me, 5-0 vote, we had two absent members that night. But the, one of the things that got mentioned in that meeting was, well, it's out in the middle of nowhere, well, I guess the folks in that part of Albemarle will consider that's not nowhere, because there's a fair number of population close by, and you're within about five minutes of, of course, downtown Albemarle, short drive. It would be in the Millingport School District, Millingport Fire Department District, so it does affect that, even though Albemarle Fire Department's just up the hill, pretty close by, so I'm sure they'd come for assistance if called upon. I believe that's all, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Bob. What I would like to do is to allow the two people that have signed up for public comments to speak first. I know one is Mr. Christopher Bramlett, one is Mr. Matthew Kirchner, and they may have information that may answer comments. information that may answer comments that are.
Well, and this, and this is actually rezoning, so it does require a public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. Bob.
Sure.
I may have missed it. How many houses?
186. I think it's 186, I believe.
Thank you.
And it's, and I'll mention, it's 100 acres. The one interesting thing is, and I'll go back to the plan, if you'll notice, it's basically what we call a cluster subdivision. That's one reason the lots are as small as they are, because of the 100 acres, 54 acres is kept as open space. And you'll see that buffers back to the back toward somewhat, at least toward Hatley Farm Road, and, and around the edges, and even around the lake, so that gives you some space there. So it's not, you know, it's, it's not covering the entire territory. In fact, it's covering less than 50%.
You think you'll spread this moment?
I'd like to ask if there was any environmental impact on this. I know it said wetlands have been studied and is going to be avoided, but is there any other environmental impact?
Not that I'm aware of. Obviously, this, this land has been vacant for a long time. I know, I think you said Chris Bramlett's on, on the list as one of the property owners, and they can probably address what traditionally this land's been used for, but I understand it's been in the Starnes family for many years. But no, there's not been a specific assessment done beyond what you see for wetlands, so, and that, again, the developer may be able to answer that better than I could.
Thank you, Bob. I'm gonna go ahead and have the public hearing. Is there anyone else besides Mr. Bramlett, Mr. Kirchner that would like to speak for or against? And I'm gonna ask Mr. Bramlett, you want to come up and make your comments during the public hearing, sir?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to follow our engineer who has some.
Absolutely. Would you rather him go first?
Yes.
Was that Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, sir.
Come on up, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner, staff and community for allowing me to talk tonight. I have a quick presentation for you.
That's fine, ma'am.
That's okay. Before I forget, I'll answer your question on the environmental studies. Wetlands, endangered species of Phase 1, environmental studies, assessment have all been completed on the site, so we will avoid any wetlands, streams, no environmental impacts because of this project. Again, thank you tonight. I'll do a quick overview. He did the thing. I got some colored pictures to kind of give you a better idea of what we're proposing in the area. Matthew Kirchner with Eagle Engineering, representing the developer and landowner tonight. To kind of give you a picture of kind of what is the full area of our project here, like they said, Long Lake is over to the side. You have Concord Road, it's the north. City Lake Drive actually comes down. Soon as you get past our site, as we're, City Lake keeps coming to the south on that side. So this is our, our area of our, our project right here. You'll see a little bit more down the road. That current pump station, I believe, is right here off Concord Road that will be relocated to the low part of our site that will capture everything on this side of the road, including everything that's going to it now. So we'll gravity feed it to the new pump station that will get turned over to the county, so the developer will pay for all infrastructure for this project, including the pump station, and then, and turn it back over to the county afterwards, once it's been completed. Here's a color rendering for you, so you can kind of see stormwater ponds. Again, a lot of open space, more than half the site we're leaving as open space. It's a beautiful area, beautiful lake backdrop, so we're trying to work with the natural beauty of, of the project as well as the, we have over a mile of trails that run along the lake. We have a park here into the, the middle side of it. The project does split City Lake Drive. There are 46 homes up here on the north side, and the remaining 140 on this side. That's where the amenity parking area and everything like that will be remained. Again, this gives you an angle. You can kind of see the park there in the middle, open space, again, buffering everything around the outside, as well as in the rear yards there. Nice trails that wrap around with the stormwater ponds. All our stormwater ponds will have fountains in them. Stormwater ponds are used for water quality as detention, so any increase in impervious that we add on site will actually detain inside of our ponds and release at a slower rate or as the rate that is on there now. So no downstream impacts based on the development of the site. We'll actually catch the water, treat the water, slowly release it out from there. The, the fountains act as two things. One is a nice amenity, so it's not just a body of water standing there for the trail, but also helps circulate the water to keep the, a little bit cleaner on, on the surface as well. This is what we're proposing for the amenity in the center. Again, nice kids park, benches, a gathering space for the community to come. One theme we did add based on the planning board's recommendation is a parking area. By zooming, we added additional parking here. We will have at least four available parking at every house, but with that, they, they did request some additional parking, so we did that add, that here in the, in the middle area. So that kind of gives you an idea where we have. So this amenity area plus a little over a mile of trails that wrap around the, the open area. Here are some proposed elevations for houses, and if you wanted to know kind of what it meant by not having more than 24 feet of running, so anywhere you, at least 24 feet, you would have like a kickback for garage, so that it's not a real flat on the front, so you have a little bit of architecture on there. These will all be for sale, not for rent houses, so the end user will be able to pick out stone, brick, color, things like that. Overall, the, the community has an HOA, so it will be some architectural requirements in it, so they won't be able to do crazy things, obviously, as they go through it, but at least get, let the end user have some customization to the, to the homes. Some ranches, and here's some two stories. Kind of what we're looking on there. With a 60-foot lot, we can go to, up to a 50-foot product, which is probably about the biggest you see on, on a new build these days. So it allows any builder to come in and, and build any product that they have. So there's a lot of options for the end user to, to have in this area. Prices are currently right now, it's always market-driven, but they're looking between and starting, I think, in the low threes until up to even probably the low fours, depending on what size house they, they, they choose. Let me make sure I didn't have any other comments on here that we had. Most on this one, I think there was some discussion, possibly after zoning, annexing this into the city. We are using county utilities as provided that one, so we will actually have to stay in the county to use county utilities. We went to the city, the city would then provide those utilities to us, and that's why all the infrastructure, the pump station that we're installing will all get turned over to the county. All the roads, sidewalks, that will all be DOT. So once the roads and everything are built by the developer, we'll turn that over to the DOT to control after that. Other than that, I'm here for any questions you have. I can show you anything else that you might have. We did have a pretty good turnout for the community when we have that one. We took all those considerations, why you see a lot more of the natural trails and buffers that worked around it, as well as planning board and staff comments.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Do you have any developments fairly close by that you've all done similar to this?
Would, so we do developments all the way up to, say, like Cleveland County, Union County. So we, we have a ton of these projects that we can have. This is the first one we actually are doing just in Stanley County. We do have one in Albemarle that's a mixed-use type with like apartments and stuff, but like they say, Union County, Cleveland County, even Anson. We just did one recently in Peachland. With the bypass coming through there, I mean, it's only 45 minutes from Charlotte to Peachland, so it definitely allows us to span out. So yeah, there's definitely like projects all around the county, not in just like the, I would say, the city that you have kind of in Union County or in Mecklenburg County.
But those are, those are cluster developments as well?
Yes, sir. Everything you see now, for the most part, are cluster developments. The two things that it has is, one, it gives you some open space, so you're not taking out every tree to build every lot that's out there. And two, with the requirements for infrastructure, nowadays, you, you have curb and gutter, you have underground storm, you have sidewalks on both sides of the road. So what we do is we condense all that infrastructure, all the impervious to as small as impact to the neighboring property as we can or community as we can, and then from there, leave the rest of it's open space. So that's how we're able to still make it affordable in today's world where everything's extremely expensive to, to build, is kind of condensing everything down. But every project that I pretty much do, I say 80% of them are usually cluster-type developments.
I, I have a couple of questions of my own, and you're probably the best one to answer to ask them to, if not, I can ask them to Director Ribsburg in a minute. Is the new pumping section you guys are doing bigger, better than the one we have now?
It's going to be up to today's standards. I'm not exactly sure how old the pump station is there now. It was, my guess is kind of old.
It'll meet our, it'll meet the needs of the subdivision, it'll meet our current needs plus accommodate for growth.
Thank you, County Man. Is there going to be any impact either during construction or with just the, the increased traffic to City Lake Bridge? I mean, I, I'm sure that was factored in.
So we, we did a full TIA. DOT didn't require us the DOTI when we had, but when we submitted to the county, the county required us to do the TIA. So we did a full traffic impact analysis that included all those intersections on there.
You've got to mention that there's going to be a turn lane, a left turn lane. I'm assuming that's on City Lake, not on 73.
So I'm going to correct that statement earlier. Early on, when we first reached out to DOT, they were requesting a left turn lane into the site. Once the county went back and requested the TIA be completed, as part of that TIA, it showed that a left turn lane wouldn't be required, so the state DOT is no longer requiring that, that, that turn lane.
Where was that turn lane going to be required? On Concord Road or on?
On City Lake Drive going into the site. So left turn like at one of our access roads.
Okay, so that's been removed.
It has been removed, yes. So we, we will meet all DOT standards and TIA requirements for this.
What is, what is the reason for number 18 on the conditions when you already have 17? And I'll paraphrase, number 17 says you have to have a garage, and then number 18 says you have to have parking, you have to have four slots if there's no garage. Well, 17 says every single house has to have a garage.
So we can edit that. It's four parking in that area, so whether you have one-car, two-car, three-car garages, you, you have to have a minimum of four parking spots inside that driveway. So if you have two-car garage, you would have two, two in the driveway, two in the, in the garage. Makes this enough doors.
All houses have to have a garage, and next to it says you got to have four spots, and here, if you don't have a garage, I thought, well, that doesn't make sense to me.
And that, that's a note that we can tweak, if that, we need to clarify that. That, that's completely fine. If that's the confusing part, we can take out that part of it.
Just to confuse, using sentence between number 17 and number 18.
Yeah, we were more than happy to work with staff on, on cleaning that comment up.
What, I, I know for the benefit of my fellow commissioners, I went to the planning board meeting because I, I was there for something else, so I got to hear this whole presentation the first time. Is there a way we can guarantee that Albemarle doesn't annex this? And the reason I ask is, if I understand that process was right, the HOA could request at some point in time, five years down the road, to have Albemarle annex. And at that point, the Millingport Fire District has maybe worked on a substation, maybe getting new trucks. Stanley County's grown, Sheriff's Department's grown to meet the need. If the county is playing to rise to meet the, the new need of a subdivision in an area that their tradition is not one, that's a significant investment for that fire district. It would not be nice for Albemarle to come along and the HOA go, you know what, y'all take it.
I am willing to work and, and do that. I know for sure the reason I would annex into cities is for utilities and, let's say, if they maintain roadways. Right now, this is going to be county utilities. So one, I mean, you would have restriction of all utilities that are in that area that are serving the community, as well as it will be DOT roads. So I'm not sure why this neighborhood would want to pay taxes to Albemarle when they're not providing any services in that area. So if there were additional services that the city would provide that you guys aren't already doing, I can see it, but again, the roads will be maintained by DOT. We're not doing private roads. Utilities aren't going to be private, they're going to be county utilities. But if there is a way to add in the notes that it cannot be annexed later on, that is definitely something we consider. I just don't know how that would work out.
Mr. Jordan, I think I can address that somewhat. If, again, your question was five years down the road.
Yep.
So by five years down the road, some of these are going to be individually owned lots. And once you have individualized lots, every one in that subdivision would have to agree to be voluntarily annexed into the subdivision. So it.
I thought the HOA, I thought the HOA board could make that decision.
I don't, not, they can't decide for an individual property owner, I don't believe. And I, I'm not an annexation expert.
So if you can clarify that for me, that'd make me feel better. There's two ways. So one, every homeowner has to agree to it, or at a county or town or city level, they force that annexation on. So, so if you guys decided to like rezone, like a master rezoning plan, you guys are master rezoning all the plans based on a, a public hearing going through. Same thing as if Albemarle, I think they would have to ask your permission to annex this, but there's, I, it's hard to get 10 people to agree on one thing, not unless, you know, 186 to all agree to.
It's hard to get seven.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all for my questions.
You're right. Here's David, hard to get forward.
You're right. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Kirchner?
I have a question. What's the width of the roads?
Um, let me look. The pavements, you see 11-foot aisles. I think it's a 50-foot right away, and there's, so that includes the, the pavements, the curbs, landscape alley and, and sidewalk.
So you don't allow on-street parking in that?
Yeah, the HOA, and that's actually was brought up while we added the additional parking at the amenity area. The HOA will control not having like RVs and stuff in driveways, the overnight parking, all those type issues on there. So the HOA will be able to restrict all those in the, in the covenants.
And I, I'm not going to care if they park wherever they want to park in their own development, I just don't want to see them on the side of City Lake Road.
Well, they definitely will be on the side of City Lake, Lake Road. Those are curvy enough to have our two driveways, it would be interior, but even with that, a lot of HOAs, if they do allow on-street parking, it would make on one side, still have to have fire trucks in. Well, that seemed to become a problem in newer neighborhoods, so new HOAs aren't allowing any on-street parking, so that way fire trucks and emergency services can get in.
I spoke to the fire chief of that district last night, the Millingport Fire Chief, just to see if they had any concerns or anything, and they, they did not. They said they look forward to revenue from it, and they are looking at maybe a, a newer substation that could serve that area better, that might help lower the ISO rating, but there were no concerns from his point of view. Anything else, Mr. Kirchner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I don't really have a whole lot to add to that. I will tell you that the property was not in the Starnes family that long, it was a Parker. And the Parker family, who is the great uncle of Pat and Jean, and they owned it long before Long Lake existed, because they actually gave the property for Long Lake. And when Oden Parker died, some of you may know him, may have known him, he left half of it to two nephews of his wife and half of it to the three Starnes, Pat, Jean and their sister. And over the years, Pat and Jean have acquired all the property from the other heirs on it. They've thought about this for a long, long time, and, and they talked to a lot of developers and that sort of thing. And I'll tell you, to us, this is beautiful. I mean, you look at those houses, and you look at the, the amount of land that's going to be put aside for, for recreation and that sort of thing. I, I don't know how you could do much better than that. And the other thing is, I want to tell you, you ain't seen nothing yet. Stanley County is positioned extremely well right now, but it's also very precarious because Stanley County is positioned right between what I call the haves and the have-nots. And if you don't believe it, look at the last census that came along. Property, the counties ahead, above us and to the west of us, growing like crazy. To the east of us, they're losing population like crazy. Stanley County has the choice of which way it wants to go, and I know which way I want to go. I want to go with the haves and not the have-nots. And I think you're going to see a lot of, a lot of proposals like this come in over the next few years. So in a way, you're positioning yourself right now as to whether you're going to be receptive to it or not going to be receptive to it, because I don't know how much better a plan can be than this. As I said, they had several developers wanting that property, and when they saw what this group presented to them, that they, they really were, were quite pleased and just couldn't, couldn't, couldn't decide to go with any, any of the others. I'll be glad to answer any questions if I can. The, the only other thing I would say is, your concern about being annexed by Albemarle, I called, I called planning and zoning. I called, I called planning and zoning in Albemarle this afternoon. And what he told you is essentially right, what Bob Rimsburg told you. Every person in that development would have to want to be annexed for them to annex, for it to be annexed in the city. And I hope that the kind of houses they're building and the kind of people they're going to have, they're not going to be stupid enough to ask to pay more taxes when they would get absolutely no more services than what the county is going to provide. So I don't really see how that could possibly be a consideration. But is there, is there any question that I might help with?
Anyone have questions, Mr. Bramlett?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this development? Mr. Burleson?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations and commissioners. I came here just to watch your meeting tonight. Really had no idea I'd get up and speak on this, but I watched the presentation and you all know that I developed property in Stanley County and I'm in this business. But I've sit here and watched this presentation and it looks like a great development. And I think we need more of this. Our county, as Chris just got through saying, our county is positioned great right now. We are going to experience growth. A lot of it is, is in the western end of the county, putting a lot of pressure on your sewer treatment facility. This would help alleviate some of that pressure. You are going to see more and more of these projects come before, before you all. A lot of it's been in some of the municipalities, but as we continue to grow, and it is a great thing that we're finally reaping some of the rewards that we should have been seeing for many years. It's time to get some of this stuff approved and move into the 21st century. It looks like a great project and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burleson. Any other people for or against Long Lake Properties? Call that public hearing closed. Any discussion from board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Fur?
I make the motion for approval.
Second.
Moved it, ZA 21 dash 11 be requested by BRD land development change for the zoning. 100.67 acres by Eugene Starnes and Patricia Brammitt. Have the R20 to the R8 to the R10 on the Long Lake Neighborhood Correction District. The conditions as agreed upon on approved. Development and growth with the area and the water and the sewer service available and therefore consistent with the land use plan.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Fur, second by Commissioner Shudo. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions for probably Mr. Rimsburg, if that's okay.
I have a problem.
Bob, on, on City Lake, from the 46 houses to the north, to the ones down at the bottom, there's no sidewalk on, on City Lake Drive?
Not, not on City Lake Drive, but yeah.
I'm a little concerned about the folks on the 46 houses from the north getting to the amenities on, like a better term, on the south side. Again, I would like to see, and I'm not sure, is that DOT City Lake DOT road?
It is.
I'm not sure if you can get that done, but I would love to see a sidewalk. You don't want to see them people walking on City Lake Drive to get down to the amenities. I understand you can drive there, but when you get 140 houses in there and you get friends coming over, that, that overflow parking is not going to last long. Anyway, I would like to see that or see some type of amenity playground or something on the 46 North. And let's see, what else? Your 25 foot setback, does that start behind sidewalk?
Right away.
Behind the right away?
Right.
Which would, sidewalk would be in that right away? Looks like you've got a two foot planter strip.
Right.
Or you got two foot valley curb, you got a two foot planter strip and you got a five foot sidewalk. So that 25 foot starts?
That sounds right, yes. It should be.
The only other thing that I have concern about, and you know this and I know it and I know Mr. Burleson down there, nobody uses their garages anymore to park their cars.
Right.
So what you're going to have is the garage is full and there's no way you're going to park four cars in there. Not everybody's going to have four cars, I understand that. But I would like to see that setback moved to 30 feet. But that's just my, that's my concern, sir.
And I'll repeat to the board, if, if there are conditions that you wish to negotiate, I'll put it that way, with the, the developer and obviously the engineers here, you know, you can, you can suggest those. Those conditions need to be, you know, that was included in Mr. Fur's motion. That needs to be included as part of that conditional district. So those conditions go along with this zoning. So if there are any additions or changes, then that needs to, to take place now before you vote on it. But the, you know, I'm fine with the, you know, whether it be 25 or 30 feet. The question would be back to the developer, whether that 30 foot would be a, a problem for them, for the front setback. I know the original request was for just 15 and the, the planning board got it to 25. Because we, same thing, how do you fit cars in front of that in a driveway? But.
And I'm not against the subdivision, it's just, I've seen it in the past.
Right.
Again, you don't want folks walking from the 46 North down to the.
Well, and, and that may be a question back to them, whether that, there can be a, you know, off that right away for City Lake Drive, can you create a trail, literally a walking trail that connects the 46 to the property?
They don't look like there's a walking trail on the 46 North.
Right.
So the walking trail and your amenities are all on the 140 lots to the south.
That's correct.
And again, I'm not against the subdivision at all, but I'm just.
You just want to make it better.
Some type of, need some type of walking trail at the front and definitely I think you need a sidewalk on the bottom. And conditional zoning, guys, is the way to go. We do it in the city of Locust and it gives you the right and the authority to make those conditions. I mean, this is really, when I read this, when Bob had all these, all these conditions, I've never seen a conditional zoning that had all those in there. Usually you might get five or 10, but.
I'm going to be honest, I've never seen that many conditions either. We're working through the process.
That's my only concern.
We have a motion and a.
I have to agree to those. Sorry, I know this is new process. So anytime you have conditions like that and you guys make them, the developer has to agree to them so that way they're, they're mutual.
Right.
Conditions, we, we agree to the 30 foot front setback addition. And as long as DOT approves a crosswalk along City Lake Drive, we will connect both projects with trails so they can get to the amenity. So I would just do that based on DOT's approval because those are DOT.
Once the motions, the motions had a second, so I don't think it can be amended. You can. Commissioner Fur, would you amend your motion to include the 30 foot setback? You fine with that, Commissioner Shudo? Any further discussion?
It was the 30 foot setback and the connectivity from the.
And the, my apologies. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Y'all going to try to throw everything at me my first night, I swear. I want to remember that. The next item on the agenda is the resolution for the individual freedom over personal vaccine status. Vice Chairman Almond, I am going to ask you to chair this. I would like to participate in the discussion on this. Chair it. Item, item number eight is yours.
Item number eight, County Manager Lucas is presenting a resolution involving individual freedom over personal vaccine status.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, the members of the board. And at least you didn't have to go in and out of Piney Point and Greater Baden while, so you did have that reprieved this evening. But.
But I'm still young.
The, this resolution is at the request of several board members. It is recently the Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration, better known as OSHA, at the direction of President Biden, released an emergency temporary standard requiring all employers with 100 or more employees to mandate COVID vaccine or require weekly COVID testing and masks by January 4th, 2022. Neither OSHA or the federal government provided funding to employers to offset the cost of implementing this mandate. Implementation of this ruling has been stayed by the Fifth Circuit of Appeals in Kentucky. And recently, this Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals in Kentucky via multi-jurisdictional lottery was chosen to decide the legality of the ETS. As such, the implementation of the ETS, which is the mandate of the, of the vaccine, is on hold pending court ruling. And ultimately, it's likely that this would be decided by the Supreme Court. So before you this evening is a resolution that speaks to individual freedom versus being forced into a mandate as an employer. This would affect the county and certainly no doubt it would create, you know, some issues for us from a, from a, from a standpoint of just logistics and cost, trying to keep up with this, trying to figure out who's, has to get tested, who doesn't have to get tested. You actually really, you have two options. You can just mandate the vaccine per the ETS, mandate the vaccine of everybody. You either have it or you don't. And if you don't, you know, you can't come to work. Or you can say you have to have the vaccine. If you don't, you got to wear a mask and you got to get tested at least weekly. And so obviously that, that is a nightmare for us as staff to, to think about trying to, you know, that logistic of that. So certainly it's, you know, my, my recommendation as manager would be to, to, you know, that, that this mandate is just really difficult, would be difficult for, for the county to, to put into place. And so certainly we'd like you to give strong consideration, consideration to this, this resolution this evening. Because it does create an undue burden, I think, not only on taxpayers as a result of us being a government, but also the private sector employers. So I'd be happy to stop there and ask if there are any questions regarding the, this item or the mandate.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a comment and I would like to make an proposed amendment to the resolution. On the comment side of things, I think, you know what? I'll leave the comment to the commissioners' comments. I'll just put this as the, the change. I'd like to add the first sentence before it says, whereas informed consent. I'd like to add before that, as I have number one, whereas the freedom to make personal health choices is one of the most fundamental human rights protected under the United States Constitution and. And then I would like to change the last sentence or the paragraph that says now therefore, the Board of Commissioners upholds this United States Constitution and fully supports the individual freedoms. And then keep the rest of the wording the same. I'd like to add that first sentence and put the words upholds the constitution and for fully supports in the last paragraph.
Commissioners, you have the amended resolution before you. Is there any comments, any further comments or discussion?
Yes, I don't know if it'd be appropriate. Mr. Townsend brought up a good amendment for amendment to the resolution too. If I could get him to repeat what he said, I'd appreciate that.
I appreciate you guys listening. I really do. You're talking about when we say we urge the NC Department of Labor Commissioner John Dobson to reject implementation of the vaccine mandate should the courts rule in OSHA's favor with an, with a expectation of full support and any needed action by Republicans in the state legislature. That's the one you're talking about? I appreciate that, guys, very much. We appreciate it.
Is there any way that could be added to our resolution that would be benefit, that we do that?
I'm not against the verbiage, I just, that's a lot of sentence to remember in my head. I'm doing good to remember the one I did.
Do you want me to give you this copy?
Do you have, do you have it written?
It's Josh Dobson.
And also, we need to make a correction. It's Josh Dobson, not John Dobson.
What did I say, Josh or John?
John.
I'm sorry.
I love suggestions. I wish you'd given to me before I'm sitting here having this meeting. You're stressing this old man out. Like you, Mr. Townsend. Okay, so if you would, so add this sentence stating we urge. So you probably want to put that at the end. We thank and support the Carolina State officials.
And then we urge.
Yeah, I would say you, you have to make the motion, put that sentence behind the word protected.
All right, I'd like to amend the motion to say, whereas we urge North Carolina Department of Labor Commissioner, is it Josh Dobson?
It's Josh.
To reject implementation of the vaccine mandate should the courts rule in OSHA's favor and expectation of full support and any needed action by Republicans in the state legislature.
To the last sentence behind discrimination.
Yeah, to the last, added this to the last sentence.
Commissioner Barby's made an additional amendment to the resolution. What's the pleasure of the board?
I have a question. We're voting on the addition to the, we're not voting on the resolution, just the addition to it there.
No, no, we're bringing up the whole resolution.
We're now voting on the.
Including the amendments.
Including the two amendments.
Including the two amendments?
Yes, sir.
So the amendments have been accepted?
No, you're, they've made them. They've, there's been a motion and a second and now you're going to vote on it after you have discussion. You're going to vote on that resolution with those amendments included.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not going to miss out on discussions because I prefer if you're going to do that to take the word Republican out of there and just say state legislatures. Because that brings, that at least lessens the partisan issue behind this.
He'll have to amend that. You got to amend that, you're going to have to amend your.
You can make an amendment to your amendment. I'm glad I read the rules of procedure book this week twice.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to my amendment to strike Republicans and it would say, any needed action by a state legislature.
All state.
All state, excuse me, all state legislature.
Is there any further comment, uh, commissioners?
Yeah, I just want to make sure when we cast a vote here, we're going to vote for or against the entire resolution with the amendments.
Yes, sir.
So if I'm going to make comments on why I'm not going to vote for, I need to make it now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Reason I cannot support, that I cannot support this resolution. And first of all, if you look at our, our vision.
Nothing, sir. Go ahead.
If you look at, at the vision of the Stanley County Commissioners, where to cultivate and sustain, sustain a community environment where children, adults learn, family and businesses thrive and our residents are healthy and safe. And our mission statement, with visionary leadership and professional staff work to ensure overall public safety, protect and promote health and well-being, effectively carry out services mandated and a few other things. I look at this and COVID is real. COVID is literally killing people in Stanley County. And, you know, we're, the county staff is against this because we're, the inconvenience of paperwork is more important than promoting good health and preventing death. That's how, that's what I heard when you were just talking right there. You know, we had this discussion before to where you didn't want to do a mask mandate because it was too hard to implement. But yet other municipalities do it all the time. They're much bigger, the city of Albemarle, give them credit for the stuff they're taking. The numbers are growing and we, we are handicapped. This is a, this to me is a public health issue, which is why I cannot support this. And basically, to me, this is a, the resolution should be named Resolution in Support of Individual Freedom Over Community Health and Preventing Community Deaths.
I guess just a comment phase. Do you have a second on that motion, by the way?
No, we, you know, I'm second. Nobody's made a motion. No, yes, you can.
Can I second and discuss? I'll make the second. So we got that. And as far as discussion, I'm fully in support of vaccines. I'm fully in support of people getting it. I'm fully in support of businesses doing it to their, their employees if they feel that's the way their business needs to do it. I'm just not fully in support of the government shoving it down their throat. I'll leave it at that.
Any further comment?
Make a comment. Yeah, I think vaccines are a personal choice. I don't think the government of any government, federal, state or local, has the right to mandate and require.
to mandate and require these type of issues.
Any further comment? We got a motion by Commissioner Barbie and a second by Commissioner Jordan. All those in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise?
Aye.
Resolution passes six one.
I've got to find where I was back on, mind you. Number nine.
Number 10, actually.
Item number nine.
I say one thing, Ms. Trump.
Is that you, Andy?
Ms. Trump.
You're number nine.
No, it's me. Ms. Trump.
Yes, sir.
Could you wait just a little bit? I'd like to speak with you, please.
Absolutely.
After the meeting.
Item number nine on tonight's agenda is the reaffirmation of Stanley County, reexclamation of the Code of Ethics. The presenter's Andy Lucas.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Per North Carolina General Statute 168-86, the board must reaffirm its Code of Ethics by the 31st of each year. And so since you don't have another regular meeting before that date, we're asking you to review and consider approval and reaffirmation of your Code of Ethics. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. Any questions for the county manager? Or any comments on the Board of Ethics, the Code of Ethics themselves?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Commissioner Eifert?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Code of Ethics in, within compliance of North Carolina statute 168-86.
We have a motion to approve. Was that, was that going to be your comment, Commissioner LaHawn?
I was going to make the motion if he didn't say.
Second by Commissioner LaHawn. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Last item on the board, consent agenda. It's in your packet. You've all read it. We're used to this part by now. Anybody have any questions, comments about it? We have a motion by Vice Chairman Almond. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Fur. All in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah, that's right. Sorry, 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 sorry. My apologies. Well, I talked enough. I thought y'all were just ready to go home. Last thing on, there's going to be Commissioner comments. Commissioner Fur, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First time I don't have a whole lot to say. Matter of fact, everybody says I don't say nothing, but I do have something to say this time. First off, I've been helping my daughter do the Santa experience and as you can tell, my hair is getting considerable long and gray. But first off, I'm kind of doing a backup for the Santa thing. And second, I've been approached to, once it's done, my hair is going to be harvested for lots of love. So I'm going to be growing it out and I'm going to be having me a ponytail before this is over. But that's number one and number two. Number three, as far as on the resolution here, I just wanted to go on record to say I have never, ever tried to take the rights from the people away from them. I think that's their choice. I've took my shots. If they don't want them, fine. If they don't want to wear their mask, fine. You know, I'm not taking that away from them. I think that rates right up there with the right to conceal or carry a weapon. That's the individual's choice. So that's all I got to say.
Commissioner LaHawn?
Bring everybody up to date on new home permits, residential home permits. January through November, we had a total of 510 new home permits compared to 241 for the same period. A 90% increase from January through November of 2020. And of those 510, I'm going to ask my fellow Commissioner Eifert, approximately how many of those were issued in western Stanley in particular, Locust, North Carolina?
175.
Okay, so we appreciate the activity that's going on out there. But 510 is astronomical number for Stanley County. And, I mean, I'm very pleased with it. And as a citizen, I hope you are too because it helps everybody. Every time a structure's built, eventually they get to pay taxes on it. So the more taxes we gather, hopefully we'll pay for the services that our county offers our citizens. But I'm very excited that we've had that many new home permits. And we still got a little bit longer to go before January comes. And we'll see how many permits are issued in December. And other than that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and hope, hope you enjoy being with your family. Thank you.
Commissioner Almond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few quick remarks. Representative Sasser and Commissioner Fur came and helped us out at Thanksgiving, delivering meals and we appreciate it big time. I think we went to, well, not us, we all split up, but over 100 houses here in Stanley County. So it was a great deal. And just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Shido?
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. I know we had a long meeting tonight, but it was very productive